Good evening and welcome to the July 15, 2019, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to be a fast next couple of items because public participation is number two and there's no public here.
Well, we have just one.
Well, there's one, but she's on our agenda, so I think we'll let her have her time. Item number three is Legislative Update. I see no legislators, legislators, so we will move on from Legislative Update. And on to item number four, which is the Updated Memorandum of Understanding between the Merrimack School District and the Merrimack Police Department. So I invite to the table Police Chief Denise Roy, and I will take care of a couple of housekeeping items while you're coming up. First, Vice Chair Sinigala Yumi and Brandy Nunez are excused from tonight's meeting. And I just wanted to do a quick introduction while you're settling in. The line to my left looks a little different. This is our new administrative team that will be at our board meetings going forward. So to my left is our Superintendent, no longer Superintendent-elect, Dr. Mark McLaughlin. To his left is our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, John Fabrizio. You've seen him at a number of meetings for Director of Special Services role, and he has now been promoted to this new role. And our anchor at the end is our Assistant Superintendent of Business, Matt Chevanel. So thank you for the indulgence, and Denise, welcome to the table.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. First of all, congratulations to everyone. We've worked together for so many years now. It just seems like it's going to be a seamless transition, so we really appreciate that. Thank you again. You know, we're here, I talked to Dr. McLaughlin in regards to our Memorandum of Understanding, and you know, we really actually should have done it when I became Police Chief, because under the old Police Chief Mark Doyle, we had, we still had the agreement, but it was signed under him. So we had talked about just coming forward and freshing it up a little bit. And just, you know, continuing on with our partnership that we have with the school district. You know, I think we're really like, I meet police officers and police chiefs from around the world. And you know, everyone has stories about how there's, nobody gets along, and school wants this, and the police department wants this. Well, we're very unique in the fact that for many, many years now, we have worked together. And it's one of the reasons, and I'm going to knock on wood as I say it, that we have one of the safest school districts in the state of New Hampshire. So I really do appreciate it. I want to continue on with the partnership that we have. And also give credit where credit is due, our school resources, resource officers really do a fantastic job of maintaining the safety in our schools, along with our community service officer who goes over to the upper elementary school. So I just want to thank them and make sure that everyone knows that they're an integral part of it. So, that's what I have.
Thank you Denise. Go ahead, Mark.
So I just, I want to echo what Chief Roy said, and I think it's important. Tonight's the night, as Chair Barnes mentioned, of changes. And I want to just make sure that the community understands that, you know, under Superintendent Chaffrey, she established excellent relationships from the school end with her, with Chief Roy's predecessors over the years. And, and I have, you know, we are going to continue that. The community should know that they really benefit from the partnership that the district and the police department have had for many years. And so, just because there's a change at central office, I really, this is going to be a time over the next few board meetings where I just want to reaffirm some things that I think the community has always relied on. And that even though there's been a change, I have, you know, every intention of sustaining the same level of partnership that we've always had. And when Chief Roy and I were talking about the SROs as an example, we were saying it's sometimes hard to prove a negative. So how many, how many bad things have been prevented that nobody will ever know about because we have that partnership? There is no data. There is no way to ever tell that story. We just know that it's beyond count. And, and so I too want to just thank the chief and past chiefs and our past former superintendent for establishing this great bond. And we have every intention of maintaining it and strengthening it. And to that end, this MOU really is just a reaffirmation of that. I will just point out that there is one change of some significance, and that relates on page two of the plan to data governance and security. And that was not in the previous MOU, and that's entirely related to a new state law that requires entities to have a governance plan and policy that makes sure that we can secure our data and make sure that we have an inventory of the data, of the technology that we use, and that we have a plan for management of that. And so, in the partnership between the district and the police department, we just wanted to acknowledge that any interaction between the two entities that involves the sharing of data will just be governed by that policy, and that that's established, and the governance plan, and that that's established and codified in the Memorandum of Understanding. Our legal counsel has reviewed this document just for currency, and in addition, the data governance and security component that was added. And so it has their stamp of approval, so I feel confident with that. So tonight, the idea was to just have the board take a look, ask questions if it wishes, and then provide the usual two weeks, well, actually, it's a little more because we won't meet in two weeks, but at our next board meeting, and have the public have an opportunity to weigh in if it wishes, and then perhaps put it on consent in two weeks. So thank you, and thank you, Chief Roy, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin.
Are there any questions on the policies that's been presented? Andy?
Do we need to read it just so that the public knows what the additional paragraph says?
That would be about that.
Because usually we read policies with it, so since we're adding a paragraph.
It's an MOU, so what I think we can do is say, because it's an MOU, although it's under our, because it's under our policies on our website.
It says it's a policy on the top.
So it's, what I would say is the Memorandum of Understanding is administering the provisions of RSA 193-D Safe School Zones. That's the title of the document, but I think would be appropriate is let's just read, I will read paragraph four because it's the only data that's different, and the rest of it is verbatim for what is published already on our website. So paragraph four is data governance and security. "The school board and the police department agree to the principles of student-staff data privacy and security as outlined in RSA 189, colon, 66, Section V. Specifically, the school board and the police department agree that the sharing of any records, electronic or paper pertaining to students or staff of either entity will be subject to and limited by the provisions of RSA 189, colon, 66, Section V, or five, I believe. And the provisions and exceptions set forth in the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, better known as FERPA, 20 U.S.C. 1234, Section G. Both agencies agree to exercise reasonable care in maintaining the security of student data that is lawfully exchanged between the two entities." So that's the only material difference, other than the enumeration of the rest of the document. So with that, if there are any questions, we have two weeks to solicit feedback from the public on that content. The rest of it is at a glance on our website. Andy?
I noticed you were struggling over there. Just for clarity, I know, just for clarity. It is under, after FERPA, it's 20 U.S.C. 1232, Section G. You said four, but in case somebody's taking notes off the.
Thank you. And I did forget my readers, so thank you for that.
I did too, so thank you for not letting me read that.
So with that, if there are no other questions, what we'll do is we'll put it on consent for our next meeting. And what will be ideal with that is it will be on file and permanent for, in time for the first day of school. Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you much Denise. You're welcome anytime. Item number five is district transition, the summary and the look ahead, and I will turn it over to Mark.
So, this is an unusual experience, an unusual day for, for me. And also, in a way, for the team to my left because it marks a big change. And I felt like, and I appreciate the board's indulgence, I felt like I wanted to just use this opportunity to just share some thinking with the board about how things might kind of roll in the next coming weeks and months and within, with the next year. And to the extent that the community will watch this or talk about it at some point, then I'd like the community to know too. So I just thought I'd take this opportunity. It's kind of unusual. We haven't had a change like this in a long time. First, I just want to turn to my left and thank John and Matt because I really appreciate, you know, we're, we've all been in the district for the last 10 years at least. I'm the newest member of this, of this team, but for the last 10 years, we've been together, but not in this way. And I really appreciate working with Matt and John in our transition over the last few months because we understand the gravity of the responsibilities that we have. And we're not new to the district, but we're new in this configuration, except for Matt, who you said rightly is the anchor, and we're relying on Matt for all kinds of historical and other supports. But we really take the responsibility that we have seriously, and we are anxious to work with the board as representatives of the community and do the board's will as the community wishes it to be. I just want to just share a couple of thoughts. And what I'm about to share is not unique to Merrimack, other than in the numbers, but it just speaks to the powers, I see it, of public education. So on a typical school day, just under 3,900 students come into our district every day. They represent nearly 8,000 parents or guardians, grandmothers, grandfathers, 350 professional staff, custodians, food ser, not including custodians, food service, transportation, crew, contracted service providers also enter our district every single day. There are buildings to clean, property to tend to, repairs to make every single day. And given the enormity of that task, I just would like to point out that on any given day, things run quite smoothly. And even though that's true, we also recognize that on any given day, there are things that don't work great. And our promise to the community is that we take those things very seriously. And we don't say, for instance, that, well, given that we have 3,900 students and, and all the complicated, 3,900 personalities that we're trying to attend to and give our best to, so therefore, give us a break, cut us some slack. There are some things that happen, and so be it. We never have a so be it attitude. We want things to work optimally for everybody. But I just do want to point out, because I think sometimes the sheer numbers kind of get overlooked, that is a lot of personalities to manage on a daily basis. And that it works as well as it does, given all the enormity of need that our students present every day, and they deserve our best. I, I'm quite proud of what we are able to accomplish, and more broadly, what public education is able to accomplish on any given day. So as we move forward, I'd like to just share with the board that we're going to be guided by a few core principles. And those are, kind of a cliche, but it's worth saying again, what is best for the students we serve. That is our number one job. I think there are folks maybe who wish at, at any given point for us to have a different job, but I would say proudly that our number one job is to ask the question, what is best for the students we serve? And since this is, there'll never be another first time like this, so I want to just say, that is really our goal. And I know it's the board's goal as well. And linked to that is what is right to do for the taxpayers whose support we depend on. And I'd just like to say that having worked in Merrimack for 10 years, I am enormously grateful, and I know Mrs. Chaffrey was too, for the community's support. They have always come through. They appreciate education, the citizens of Merrimack do, and have shown that in any number of ways. And so that's not lost on us, and we appreciate it. And we are very, very mindful of the responsibility we have to the taxpayer as well. And it's not necessarily a mutually exclusive proposition that we consider what's best for the students and entertain what is right and just for the taxpayer. The third principle that we're guided by is how we can keep an eye on making the best of the present moment. Meaning, on any given day, our goal is to make this the best day for students that we can. And we always have to cast one eye to the future. And that makes sometimes for difficult conversations with parents and with teachers, and even sometimes with students. Because keeping one eye on the future means that what could come from that is a change. Perhaps a change happens. In fact, if you think about what the future means, the future by definition means it's different from today. And we can't do what's best for students with an eye to the past. We can learn from the past. We can sustain the things from the past that have taught us through time and testing that they work. But we shouldn't be bound by the past. We've got to keep an eye on the future and what's best for students moving forward, to make a better future for them. So those three core principles are really what guide our thinking, will guide our thinking for this next year. In addition to John at the table, I just want to point out, because I think the community should know, that we have two brand-new assistant principals in our district. We're delighted to have them both. Michaela Champlin is the Assistant Principal at Thornton's Ferry School, and Bonnie Paint Show is the Assistant Principal at Reed's Ferry School. We have a brand-new Special Education Director, Heather Barker, Student Services. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Yeah, you have.
Somebody's saying that for a while.
Absolutely, absolutely. Student Services Director from Concord, Heather Barker. We have one principal that's not new to the district, but new to her role. We have an Assistant Superintendent that's not new to the district, but new to his role. And we have a Superintendent that's not new to the district, but new to his role. These are the realities of the Merrimack School District right now. They're, it's changed, but I think it's a good change, and we're looking forward to embracing that. But I say that because I want the community to know that this is a period of transition. And as this new team continues to work together to know each other, I want the board to know that we are, in addition to what I just shared, we have a couple of particular focuses, folk I, that we're going to pay attention to this year. One, and the board has shared this as an, as an interest slash concern for some time, and that's communication. We, when I started in Merrimack 10 years ago, just using 10 years as a benchmark because it relates to my tenure here, the expectations of the community were based on the technology that was available to the community at that time. 10 years doesn't seem like a lot of time, but in 10 years, a lot has changed. And we probably need to speed up the degree to which our district matches the expectations of the community to the changes that have been experienced in those 10 years. So we really recognize that the community deserves better, more frequent, and more informative information about a range of the things that we're involved in, and so we're committed to doing that. But I do just want to make this point because I think it's vitally important from my perspective, and I think it's worth repeating a number of times. There is one kind of communication that I just want to offer caveat about, and that is that in a time of crisis of any sort, so any kind of event that would require, for instance, students to be locked down for their safety, whether it has to do with the possibility of, of fire or any kind of crisis, we will always, always take care of your children first. And sometimes, what that means is that there may be a temporary delay in our communication to the community. And I know that in the past, there have been folks who have wished that we could do both at the same time. And if there is anyone in the community who has a better way of doing it, then I really mean it most sincerely. I encourage you to share that thinking. But what I'll tell you is that in two instances in the last 10 years, when I've been involved in a situation that has required all hands on deck, we need every hand on deck. When it comes to the safety of our community's children, we cannot spare any person to spend five minutes communicating about what's happening. Because that one person has control of the safety and security of children, and we can't afford the time or the, the person power away from that. So I will say that we are going to do a very, as good a job as we can improving our communication. But this is something I just want to share now, and, and again and again. At any point when there is a crisis that demands the attention of our staff, we will only be working on that issue. And if that means that we are delayed in communicating what has transpired, that's the price we pay for taking care of your children, because we'll give you safe children back at the end of the crisis. So I just want to share that right now. I think the community is owed an understanding of how that works. Our second focus, as I alluded to, is budget. And our job, as I mentioned a minute ago, has been for all these years, and will continue to be to create the conditions for the best possible education we can provide for our students. And I say this with gratitude that the board has, that leads every board message that we've ever received in my 10 years here. And in every public and private conversation I've ever had with any member of any iteration of this board over the last 10 years, that has been consistent. The, any board that Merrimack has, that has served Merrimack over the last 10 years has cared equally about that. And it will continue, and that's the message we get. And I, and what I would say that guides us in our thinking is that I want no less for other people's children than I want for my own. And I want the best for my children. I don't want to have my children have to put up with less than they should have. And if that's the case for me as a parent, I don't want to say other people should deal with less. But that doesn't mean that we're careless with the tax dollar. And I don't think that they have to be mutually exclusive propositions. And so I had a conversation with Chair Barnes about my wanting to be very careful in the creation of this year's budget and to be as public as we can about how we're moving and progressing. And so I'll say it now, and I'll say it again. We want what's best for the children of Merrimack, as we have wanted for all these years, and we, it's not, it's not inconsistent and incompatible with delivering the best value to our taxpayer. And so I think that's worth repeating. The third thing that I just want to stress in this night of transition is instructional improvement. We have been about that over the last 10 years. We have, over the last 10 years, we've shared curriculum, curriculum updates that have been adopted by the board, sometimes wholesale revision. We've talked about programming through student services, through irregular education, RTI, UBD, all the acronyms. We have tried to keep an eye on the future. This year, we're going to add another acronym, under the spirit of Continuous Improvement for Instruction, and that's UDL, or Universal Design for Learning. I suggested to the board at our meeting in June what that was and what that was about. And I did that because I am trying to stay consistent with what our pledge has been, which is to continue to provide ongoing information, even if we can just say there's a thing called UDL, we'll talk more about it later. So tonight, I just am sharing again that our August Academy, at the end of next month, is going to be entirely devoted to training teachers in the practices of Universal Design for Learning, which, when you strip away all of the details about it, merely is a way for teachers to more efficiently plan for instruction that will support the needs of more children in a more comprehensive way than perhaps before. That doesn't mean that we have short shrifted students in the past, but if we keep an eye to the future, you, Universal Design for Learning isn't a brand-new concept, but in its application in Merrimack, it is. And so we are trying to maintain what's worked and keep an eye to the future. We also know that graduation rate, particularly at, at the high school, is a concern. It's a concern for administration as well. I've talked to Principal Sharon Putney about that over this last year, and even more recently. And she's prepared to come in August and speak to the board about what actions she's taken in this last year and what fruit she has seen from that effort. She's planning, she will be prepared to share with the board specific actions that she's planning to take in this upcoming year, which remember, will only be her second year in this position, to continue to address the graduation rate issue. And thirdly, in her presentation, she is going to speak to the board and the community about how that graduation rate is derived and how we are required to report those graduation rates, which I think will be of interest to the community because it's quite a bit more complicated than one might imagine. And so, as is often the case, the devil is in the details. And so Mrs. Putney will provide, not an excuse, but an explanation for how that graduation rate gets developed and, and how we have interpreted the state requirements for reporting that. And I think that, coupled with her action plan, will provide a basis for a good conversation in the fall between ourselves and the board about that particular issue. And as is always the case, we have standardized test results that we report annually. And we, I think it's fair to say, have scores that are at best in the middle of the pack. I've also said to the board, and what I'm about to say is true for every other district in the, in the state, but in the last 10 years, we've had no fewer than four different sets of assessments. And so that is what it is. It's not an excuse. It's a fact, and the fact has certain effects. And I think it was Board Member Schneider who asked at a previous meeting, if not the last meeting, what other things beyond just test scores do we use as indicators of success? And one of the things that we're going to continue to do this year, we're not abandoning test scores. We want excellent results for New Hampshire SAS, like everybody does. And whether we get them in this cycle or not, isn't the whole story. If we have excellent results to, to report in the fall, I would not tell you that that therefore means we have no work to do in Merrimack. And if we have less than stellar results when we do the analysis, that doesn't mean that nothing is working in Merrimack. So I want to continue to be open about how we view test scores, how we use them, how they inform us, and how we use and what other measures we use to get a better picture about what in fact it is that we are providing to our children, and whether it's having the outcomes that we expect. So, so in this night of transition, I just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of lay out just a brief and sort of 50-foot view of, of what we're committed to providing. And that is always in the context of what the board wants from us. And we will, we will be responsive as I hope we have been in the past and will continue to be to the board's priorities and initiatives as well. So that's what I just feel like I wanted to share with you tonight and to reassure the community that we are looking forward, the three of us, to the challenge that lies ahead. And we're going to work every day to provide the best service to our students that we can. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or any dialogue that you'd like to have.
Any questions or comments from the board? Andy?
So Mark, I want to thank you for your transparency here, is sort of the way that you're going to approach things and, and sort of to share what your priorities are. I know that as a board member, we, board members, we see this all the time, and you, as administrators do, other different influences and requests, use it that way of the district that we have in terms of results, trying to be frugal or effective with the way we spend money. And the challenge is for us to sort of respond as to what we're hearing and what our, what our successes are, where our challenges are. And I heard all of that today in what you described, and I think, and that's not really different than Superintendent Chaffrey used to do, but I think that by you bringing that to the forefront, saying that you carry those as, as responsibilities, is, is a very powerful message. And I hope that those that are listening see the importance and see the seriousness that you take those. Because I think those are all challenges that we see on a daily, weekly, monthly basis out in the community. weekly, monthly basis out in the community. And I think that our, our discussions and our queries and as we go through these processes are going to be touching on those. So it's going to be a challenge, obviously, but I want to appreciate the openness and the, and the sort of ground-setting, if you will, that these are the main important things. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that we'll be, we'll be here with you as a board to support you as you go through this, this first year and first month and first process A, B, and C. So thanks.
No other questions? I will say that when it comes to this year, we knew that there would be change. We expected it. Learning from what we have always done well and learning what we can always do better. So in some ways, nothing's changing. It's just how we get to the end result of continuous improvement is going to be strategically done slightly differently. So I think that we're in, we're in a good place as a district. You know, we, I think we put the best people in the state possible to be in these roles. You know, with, I hate to say former superintendent, if there's like a superintendent emeritus or something like there's for one old board. But, you know, just knowing that Marge felt comfortable retiring because she knew that was in good hands, and we are. So, you know, I think the biggest thing when you're talking about communication is, a communication is not a speech. Communication goes two ways. And I think that with the community, and I've been really vocal and sometimes not, not appreciative, but I think Facebook has been something that can be a good thing. We have a Facebook page. I'm not looking at privately moderated forums, but I think that with the community, if outreach on Facebook is a place of comfort, to have a constructive conversation on the Merrimack School District page is the right way to do it. But again, privately moderated forums is, is not where we're going to go because it's, it's controlled by who manages it and the message is what the moderators are wanting to see. And if they don't like it, they take it down. So it's not where we need this communication to come from. So the invitation is there to post on Merrimack School District in a positive and professional way. And we are here to take the feedback from the community. We always have been acknowledging social media as a way that this district is looking to solicit that feedback. That is the way to do it. I know that other social media platforms are forthcoming, but right now, that's the backbone. I think Twitter may be coming down the road and maybe even Instagram and all the ones that are getting very popular out there as well. So with that, you know, we are, we are here to listen and the messages will get back to the superintendent and his team. So, thank you. If there are no other questions, we will go on to the slippery slope of our agenda, which is item number six, the approval of June 17th, 2019 minutes. I will entertain a motion to, made by Naomi, seconded by Andy. Are there any adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries three, zero, zero. Onto item number seven, which is consent agenda with John. It used to be consent agenda with Mark, and I didn't think anything of it, but consent with John.
Well, thank you. Under nominations, we have a few. I'll start with Jenna Deschains, a science teacher at Merrimack High School. Abigail Garland, English teacher, Merrimack High School. Jennifer Heck, first grade teacher, Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. Lauren Hanson, kindergarten teacher, Master Cola Elementary School. And Laura Nelson, Special Education Coordinator at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. And then we have two resignations. And they are Adam Vignalt, Technology Teacher at Merrimack High School, and Kathleen Chartier, Math Teacher at Merrimack Middle School. And that will be all.
I will entertain a motion. Andy?
I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Seconded, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries three, zero, zero. Onto item number eight, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000 with Matt.
Thank you. This evening, we have a gift to Merrimack High School from the Merrimack Lions Club in the amount of $1,000. The 2019 Cheryl Pierceall Memorial Grant will be used to purchase a classroom iPad Pro and accessories for Mr. Fliss's classroom number 232. So we appreciate the Merrimack Lions Club in, in concert with the Cheryl Pierceall Memorial Grant for $1,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Made by Andy?
I move that we accept the gifts and grants in the amount of $1,000 from the Lions Club with our sincere appreciation.
Seconded, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries three, zero, zero. Onto item number nine, which is other. Is there correspondence to come before the board? Other than in our packet, which I'm going to defer to Mark, since the letter was addressed to you.
So I'm just pleased to share, we received a letter from a parent at one of our schools who was sharing his pleasure at the services that he, his son received. And so we're very grateful to that parent for reaching out to us and happy to share that with the board.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any other correspondence? Seeing none. Is there any, are there any comments from the board? Seeing none. We're onto new business. Is there a new business to come before the board? Seeing none, we'll close new business. Onto committee reports. Are there committee reports from the board? Andy?
So actually, I have one and a half. So the, the main one is Suresk, as we've, we know, I'm in the Board of Directors for Suresk, and we had our meeting. I'm now the Chair of the Board of Directors, which I'm not sure that's a great thing, but it was sort of like drew the short straw. But I, it's, it's good because Suresk, as you know, is continuing forward with, with providing services to school districts around special, special education, psychological, psychology, things like that. We are transitioning after the first year and are having a very successful financial stability. So Suresk is in some ways back to its roots. We're, we've gone through some transition with, with Board of Director members. This is our first meeting in a long time without March Chaffery. Same is true with Suresk Board of Directors, because she's no longer the Board of Directors either. So it was a meeting without her today as well. So the March Free Zone, I guess, is, is what we're all running into. But we had two new members brought in, and we also continue our search for a Program Director for Suresk to help to sort of promote Suresk's product and things like that. So a lot of positive thing, a lot of move forward. Suresk is, is being successful again. I know from student services that we're going to be looking at Merrimack as well as others to see whether there's services that would be cost-effective to be able to do this. So I'm sort of keeping my ear to that railroad track as well. So the half of a one has to do with planning and building. And the reason it's half is because one of the actions that both Planning and Building and the School Board gave to Mr. Sheminal down at the end was to come up with, to work with Sullivan Engineering to come up with some proposals for building actions around the Brentwood Building and how different options could be looked at for an SAU sped structure at that location. He, Matt reached out to me a couple of weeks ago, said that we have the results back, we have three different proposals. But the next step was to then present them to the Planning and Building Committee and let them go through, because they have the action to look at all the past and the current options and come back to this board with a recommendation. So those, I, I presented those pieces of information to Planning and Building. However, I've not received any feedback yet as to when a meeting might come and what the status is on those. So I have the action to sort of follow up, to make sure that that's going to happen. We were hoping to have Planning and Building come to this meeting or the next to sort of present the results, but I think because of the short time, this meeting didn't make sense. I'd like to be able to have Planning and Building come next meeting, much more likely early in September to present where things are at, to understand what's feasible, what some of the ideas are. So just give people a heads up that that's still in process in the background, but I don't really have any, there was no meeting that was held, so.
So that said, I think that September would be more appropriate, only because people are a bit unplugged and this is a serious undertaking of the district. Buildings are a big deal. So, and usually don't come at a low cost. So I think it might be, September might get more of a, an audience.
Right. My only thing is they might come to ask, if there's some questions that they have of the board, they may choose to come just to ask some of the questions. But you're right, I think for as far as, I don't think they'll be prepared to give a presentation in that shorter timeframe, but I'm trying to keep the pressure on that committee to be able to move forward, so.
Sounds good. I have two. So on the 19th of September, Parks and Recreation met. And there are a couple of things, they are pretty much at capacity for camp registrations. However, you never know about a cancellation. So if you're looking for a camp for kids, they are still worthy of a call. On July 4th, I, I was actually one of the volunteers for the parade, so they ran that. It was quite the week for them, actually. They also, the next day, had the movie night, so that Friday night. And so it was quite a week for them. So the summer concert series is still going on every Wednesday night at Abbey Griffin Park through August 21st. And there are two movie nights left in the series this summer. The next one is Sunday, July 21st, again, again at Abbey Griffin Park, and it is Mary Poppins Returns. And it's National Ice Cream Day, so they will be giving out ice cream. And then the final night for the movie night series is Tuesday, August 6th, so again, before our next meeting. And that will be The Incredibles 2. The movie will start at 8:00 PM, but it's the nightcap event for the National Night Out with the Merrimack Police Department. So because of all the activities associated with that event, that movie night will be held at the American Legion, which is just across the street from the high school and next, practically next door to the police station. So that is Parks and Rec. And we do not meet in August, so, actually, we do not meet in July, so my next meeting will be in August. And probably won't be until, actually, I can't remember if it's before or after our next meeting. On July 9th, the Greater Woods Subcommittee met, and we met in the outdoor classroom, right off of the Merrimack Middle School campus. So it is technically a town piece of property. The easiest place to park and get on that property is the middle school. So if for some reason you're going there during school hours, we would still appreciate you checking in with the main office, so we know what cars are there for student safety purposes. But we parked there, met in the outdoor classroom, and it has been completely revamped. So it has been rebuilt by Eagle Scouts. There's a stage with, with a overhang with a roof to it, so for protection. And then there's bench seating that can probably easily seat 30. So it's all brand-new, it's pressure-treated lumber, and all the benches are in concrete pedestals that are buried in the ground, so they are, they are solid and good for the long term. The original classroom was done with logs from the trees from the forestry project that we had on the property. And so it was the logs to lumber. Projects, so nothing was pressure-treated, so it definitely had its day in the sun, the rain and all the other elements in New England. So it needed to be replaced and they did a wonderful job. We are making updates to the master plan, including updating, from the time the master plan was originally drafted, a number of properties were added on to the original property. It's over 600 acres now. And so we want to do updates to the master plan on the projects done, the trails that have been expanded. And then we're reviewing the impact of current housing development projects regarding access to the property and its usage. So we know that a lot of neighbors will make their own trail into the property, but it creates a rut that would lead someone to believe that's an actual developed trail done by the town. So we don't want to lead people into people's backyards. So, you know, we definitely want to get some communication plans going with that. So, but there's a number of developments. The one that's near the middle school that we know all too well about. But then off of, now I'm, Wilson Hill Road, there's a private developer that's doing a number of houses as well, a couple dozen. So between those two things, it will definitely impact the usage and access points. So that was it, and we are meeting again in September. So if there are no other committee reports, we will again remind you, there's no public here, so we will close public comments on agenda items. We will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Naomi, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries three, zero, zero. Thank you and good night.
Good night. One in the books.